Welcome to the podcast and interview with Islam Unraveled. And we have our councillor from the great city of Surrey, Linda Anis, who's also Executive Director of Crime Stoppers. And we really are honoured to have you on our programme. And for our listeners to really understand the great work that Crime Stoppers does, as well as the work that you do with the council of the city of Surrey.
It's a pleasure to be here. It's a real honour and I'm looking forward to chatting with you.
Awesome. And you know, I was reading your bio and your accomplishments and all the committees you're on, the award, the Golden Jubilee Award that you received from the Queen. And so I have to say quite accomplished and not sure exactly where to start. But usually what we like to do is start with the personal journey. Like, you know, how you kind of started on this path to public service and to become an elected official representing the city of Surrey as a starting point. And then how you eventually became the Executive Director of Crime Stoppers, which is an amazing accomplishment. So please, please share with us your story.
Well, I actually started my work career with Kodak Canada and was with them for many, many years. And when I left Kodak, one of the things that I took care of at Kodak was the community investment piece. And from that I learned the importance of giving back to your community. And my parents, I might also add, were real givers to the community. My mother volunteered extensively everywhere, from the hospital to food banks, to wherever she could get involved. And my father was much that way too. So I guess it's a little bit in my DNA to want to give back to my community. But I can't say enough about the pleasure it is to be able to help others that are maybe less fortunate than myself. And that's really driven me to many things that I've done around my career and about my volunteerism. I've done, I've worked with children that have been at risk. I've worked with people with disabilities. I've been involved with the hospital and many other things as well.
And it's like a heartfelt work and obviously with the great example of your parents to see how they cared about others. And obviously it translated in your upbringing that it became also a heartfelt, passionate decision to follow in their footsteps.
You know, my parents were immigrants. My dad came from Russia. And you know, he got and his family got a lot of help along the way. And if it wasn't for that help, my father couldn't have made the accomplishments that he was able to make. And he felt that it was always really, really important to pay it forward and pay it back, to help those that are less fortunate, those that need a helping hand, to reach out and do that.
Absolutely. And now, obviously, a lot of great work in your career, in your professional career. And then the journey to become City Councillor and then eventually to being an Executive Director for Crime Stoppers. Please tell us about your political journey and then your journey with Crime Stoppers.
Well, my political journey was a very interesting one and it is a little humour to it as well. I was asked, I really had no aspirations to run for public office. I've always been someone that's worked more in the background, both in terms of my volunteerism and also advocacy in my community. But last election here in Surrey, the Surrey First Lady, which many people would know about, Diane Watts had founded the party and they've been in power for many years. They had a spot that came vacant just before election time. And a dear friend of mine said, would I consider to run for? And I thought, you know, it would be really interesting and it would give me an opportunity to learn more about parts of my community that I don't know much about. And you know, who knows, one day I might be successful and become a councillor. I had no any reason to believe that I would make it the first time because I really hadn't campaigned for long. Well, then things happened and I was the only member of the Surrey First Team to actually make it into office this time. So it's been very interesting and you know, I wouldn't change it for a minute. Had I known now, 10 years ago, I would have done this and entered this journey then. It's just a phenomenal opportunity to be able to get closer to your community, to engage more with the residents of Surrey. And it's just opened my eyes to so many other things that I wasn't aware of.
And you are actually in the heart of the fastest, largest growing city, metropolitan city in Canada, which is growing at a rapid rate and traffic obviously growing at a rapid rate. But amazing to see from when we were in Surrey in the 1980s to where it is in 2021. An amazing kind of leap forward and perhaps maybe the mission of the City Council and yourself for the great city of Surrey and some of the exciting things moving forward for the city and the residents.
Well, Surrey is a phenomenal time to be a City Councillor in Surrey. We're soon going to be bigger than Vancouver. We are going to be the centre of the south of the Fraser River. We've got a huge amount of opportunity here for residents and new residents coming to Surrey. Surrey is growing at the rate of 1,500 people per month, which is very, very phenomenal. And with that, with growth comes opportunity and challenges. We're building a vibrant downtown core in the Wally area. Amazing to see what's going in there. We're building all sorts of community centres and rec centres to support our population. We have a very young population here, made up primarily of families. And what I love most about Surrey, or I shouldn't say most, but one of the things I love most about is the diversity of Surrey in so many ways, both ethnicity, culturally, and the wide spectrum of ages that are here. So it's a huge opportunity to do so much here. And we really need to be able to develop Surrey in a way that we can live here, we can work here, do our post-secondary education, whatever that looks like, and have a job in Surrey. We don't want to be commuting to other municipalities and be stuck in our car for hours on end. We need to be able to live, work, play and educate ourselves here in Surrey.
Absolutely. And my parents, they live in Chimney Heights and it's a little bit kind of out of the way. And I know Skytrain, there is a plan for Skytrain to eventually extend up to 152 and beyond. How is that project coming along?
It's coming along. It was paused for a short time while we were figuring out finances and so on because of COVID. We're really hoping that the federal government will come along and allow us or give us the money so we can extend all the way to Langley now because we desperately need transit in Surrey. It's one of the things that we're lacking. We have the fewest number of stops of age, any major city for Skytrain. We need to change that. We need to be getting better transportation, east-west and north-south as well. In some parts of Surrey, it's very difficult to be able to get a bus. But we're working on that and we will see improvement in the very near future.
Absolutely. And one thing I will say, the city of Surrey embracing the diversity and the multiculturalism, as you'd said earlier. And myself being of South Asian origin, from India and Pakistan originally, but by faith from the Muslim community. And as we know, people from India and from Pakistan and also the religion of Islam and Sikhism, many, many adherents to those faiths in Surrey. And I know the vibrant Muslim community with the Surrey Al Jamia Mosque on 72 Avenue, Mashhad Al Noor near King George and Guildford Islamic Centre. And really, I would say, out of any city in British Columbia, the Muslim community probably has more places of worship, restaurants that have halal meat, which is similar to kosher and that infrastructure. A lot of people actually come from all over the province and even some folks from the States before the pandemic to actually come to Surrey because of such a rich kind of services for the Muslim community.
It's amazing. I mean, we have so many services. And I think from a food perspective, you know, it's a culinary delight. I mean, you can experience so many different cultures through food here. It's truly amazing. And I just think it's so nice that we all live, are able to live together and learn from each other in terms of our traditions and our faith and how we go about our daily lives. I mean, I think that's just absolutely phenomenal.
And as you know, like the majority of people are peace-loving and law-abiding. And but now with this journey to Crime Stoppers and obviously there is crime as there is rapid growth, a small percentage, there is an element of crime. And based on Crime Stoppers, one being a nonprofit society, and there, from my understanding, 1,800 Crime Stoppers organisations across North America. Please describe your journey to Crime Stoppers and really what Crime Stoppers is and the services provided for the community.
Well, I was, I came to Crime Stoppers almost 10 years ago now. It's hard to believe. It's been a very, very quick 10 years, probably the quickest 10 years of my whole career. And I principally came to Crime Stoppers to help to build the programme. I come from a marketing and communications background and so much of what we do at Crime Stoppers is getting word out to the community about how they can engage with the programme. And it's a great programme and many people don't know about it. So I'll just give you a little brief overview of it. So I represent Metro Vancouver Crime Stoppers, which covers a jurisdiction from Boston Bar to the Powell River. So it's huge. We represent just under 3 million people that we cover. On an average year, we get just somewhere between 5,000 and 6,000 tips a year. And they're on a whole wider range of subjects, anything from homicide to, you know, a break-in, to a suspicious person in your neighbourhood or drugs or whatever. We get a lot of gang tips, of course, too. The beauty of the Crime Stoppers programme is that whatever information we get, when you call us, you remain anonymous. So oftentimes people are afraid to call in, they're afraid of reprisal. Particularly if you're reporting, say, on a gang member, little would you ever want him or her to know that it was you that called? Or you might be, you might be reporting suspicious activity on your next-door neighbour. And again, you wouldn't want people to know that you were calling in. So if you call Crime Stoppers, you always remain anonymous. We don't track IP addresses. We won't take your name. We won't take your address. We don't have call display. We don't record calls. So once we get your information, we make sure that the information is, will not reveal your identity in any way, and then we pass it on to the police. And the success rate is very, very good. But before I talk about that, I would just like to mention that Crime Stoppers is open 24/7. So it doesn't matter whenever you have the information, you can always reach out to us either through our 1-800-222-tips number or through our website, www.solvecrime.ca. We also have an app, P3, which is available through the Android or Apple Store. So you can reach us in a multitude of ways. And the other beauty of our programme is, if English isn't your first language, doesn't matter. We take tips in 115 different languages.
Amazing.
It's absolutely phenomenal. And if we get a tip, you know, we will get it translated into English and oftentimes verified if we're unsure. And then we pass it over to the law enforcement agencies. And our success has been huge since the inception of Metro Vancouver Crime Stoppers. We've had more than half a billion dollars worth of property and drugs recovered. That's a billion, not a million.
Wow.
We've had almost 9,000 people arrested as a result of Crime Stoppers tips.
Wow. And in terms of the relationship with the other Crime Stoppers across Canada and North America, is there, is there a certain policies and procedures that all Crime Stoppers govern by? Or is it localised to the region that you brought up earlier?
So we have a very similar standard in terms of practice. What is unique about us? If you dial the 1-800 number, the 1-800-222-tips or visit our website, if you happen to be, for an example, say, in Vancouver and you were leaving, wanted to leave information about a crime or suspected individual who maybe lived in California or Nevada or wherever it would be, the information all comes through one number and it gets sent to the appropriate Crime Stoppers programme. So that's really great because sometimes you know something that's not right where you live, but the information can still get out to the proper authorities.
So the jurisdiction, so that number, so if, let's say, the crime or the potential crime, because law enforcement is bound by jurisdiction and certain regions and cities that certain law enforcement operate in and they don't necessarily go into the other jurisdictions. So Crime Stoppers more or less crosses all jurisdictions like and reporting to the jurisdiction police of where that potential or that crime is?
Absolutely. It doesn't matter from wherever you call from, but the information gets relayed to the appropriate law enforcement agencies where that suspicious activity is taking place.
And I did see there's a comprehensive list of law enforcement agencies throughout Canada, throughout the lower mainland and even the international ones beyond the borders of North America. So for international type crimes, so have there been a lot of tips from Vancouver regarding the internationality of crime?
Absolutely. You know, we send tips all over and not just to law enforcement agencies, but also if it's something that deals with, for an example, say Ministry of Children and Family Services or the SPCA, you know, those are just two examples. But we deal with a multitude of different agencies. It's actually very fascinating and a really rewarding experience for me.
And Linda, in terms of like the value proposition is Crime Stoppers is not law enforcement. And so it's like, and how would you describe it? An intermediary, kind of a buffer between the reporter and law enforcement. So Crime Stoppers would be the resource in which, which would communicate with the person who's reporting to verify the information and then qualify the information according to certain questions and possible language translations and then pass it along to the jurisdictional police force?
Yes, we're all civilian employees and we're actually quite a small organisation. But we're all civilian employees and we view ourselves as the middle person between the community and law enforcement. So we take the information, make sure it doesn't reveal anybody's identity and then we pass it on. And I might also add, if the information, you know, goes to the police, the police use the information as a way to start their investigation. If somebody's arrested, they go to court, they get charged. Still, we are protected so that, under the Supreme Court of Canada, so that that our information that's been given to us will never be revealed in court.
The actual person that reported it, to keep the anonymity and the integrity of the service?
It's vital to the success of the programme. If we jeopardise any person's identity, that would be the end of Crime Stoppers. And the programme has been around now for 40 years, so it's been a very successful programme.
And I did see there's some sort of financial, like a $2,000. Can you explain what that amount of funds is for, for people that report?
So what happens when you call Crime Stoppers and you give us the information? We will give you a record number and you can call us back after 60 days. And sometimes it takes longer because some investigations are quite complex. And if your information was successful, meaning that it helped the police, doesn't have to mean that there was an arrest made, but they found something that substantiated the information that you gave us, then you're eligible. And actually, the amount has gone up to, it's up to $5,000 now.
Oh, wow.
What would happen is you would have to call us because we have no way to reach out to you to confirm whether or not your tip was successful or not.
And I understand with Crime Stoppers, because crime is so vast, whether it's, you know, assault, robbery, theft, murder, in so many kind of forms. So in the type of statistics, like the reports, do you get a lot of them via your app? Via the phone calls, via, how do people prefer to reach out to you? And what are the typical crimes? Is there, or is it all across the board?
It's pretty much across the board. Our app is reasonably new. So I would certainly say we get more phone calls or people going to our website and filling out the tip information sheet. But I would, I would venture to guess that it's probably about a 60/40 split. And in terms of the types, we get tips on everything. You know, generally if there's a homicide or something like that, we'll have a big spike in tips on homicides. But we get them on virtually everything, you know, from elder abuse to, you know, child abuse, to homicides, to robberies, lots of drug tips. So really a wide spectrum.
And I was looking at some of the programmes, like there's First Nation programmes, new immigrants, school programmes, wildlife, environmental, as you said, elder abuse, anti-gang. And obviously, those are, those are huge topics, each individual one. And how does Crime Stoppers, how do folks in these particular contexts, the same process, call the number and just say, if it's an elderly person that's experiencing a certain type of abuse, to report in the same way?
Absolutely. So what we do is we like to go out to the community and we do a lot of community outreach because a lot of people don't know about Crime Stoppers and they don't understand how it works or when they should call us or how they should report. So as Crime Stoppers evolves, what we'd like to do is go out and we work, for an example, you had mentioned our elder abuse programme. We go to a lot of senior centres or seniors groups and we'll do presentations on Crime Stoppers. Because oftentimes people are afraid to report or they're embarrassed to report or they just aren't quite sure what to do with the information. So we make sure that they realise that Crime Stoppers is an option. And, you know, we always encourage people, if they're comfortable, to call the police. But sometimes people just do not comfortable.
And as you said, newcomers from other parts of the world, new immigrants, refugees and certain countries to, police are not regarded in the way that they are. Let's say in Canada and there's a reluctance, maybe a cultural reluctance to engage police. And in your outreach with the new Canadians, newcomers, immigrants and refugees, obviously the first thing that comes up maybe is this going to go to the police? Am I going to get in trouble? Am I going to be on that list? That kind of thing?
We get a lot of that and we really, and that's why it's so important that we get out to the community and we do engagement with people because people think, oh yeah, they must be somehow the police. And if you come from a war-torn country particularly, oftentimes police there aren't your friends. You know, you want to avoid any interaction you possibly can. And oftentimes people will take the approach, well, I'll deal with it myself. I know it's wrong, but I'll deal with it myself. And that's not a good outcome for anybody. So we really try to encourage people that are afraid of the police to have the confidence that Crime Stoppers will watch out for you and that they will ensure that your identity is not revealed. And that we also try to encourage people to know too, that the policing calendar are quite different, that, you know, they are there, they're there to support you. So we try to do that, but when in doubt, we want people to call Crime Stoppers.
And as we are in this modern age with the internet becoming a large part of our lives and a lot of crime is happening online and not only crime, but also racism and materials advocating for violence against races and religions and what have you, places of worship. And with that type of activity, like where there's smoke, there's fire, where people are talking about, let's say, criminal activities online that may or may not be a crime then and there, but they're talking about certain criminal activity that could be race-based or religious-based. What are the areas in which Crime Stoppers can help against that?
Well, it's very important that people are experiencing that or they know people that are experiencing this, call us because we can get that information to the appropriate authorities so that they can start building intelligence around this kind of activity. If people don't say anything, it can't be brought forward. It's really, really important that if people are experiencing this type or see this type of behaviour, that it gets reported. And Crime Stoppers is a very safe option for this. I think we all have to work, you know, we all are one. We all have a heart and we need to be working together to overcome a lot of this, you know, racial biases and things like that. It's just not good. We are the same.
Absolutely. And even as we know with, you know, certain things that are happening in the Muslim community, we just had our, January 29th, the federal government, the Prime Minister Justin Trudeau, various mayors and councils across Canada have declared January 29th for a Day of Remembrance and Action on Islamophobia. And obviously, you know, certain perceptions people have about different communities and races and what have you. And in the particular case of the white supremacist gunman that went into the mosque in Quebec and shot the worshippers there, six of which were killed. They defected families and again, law-abiding people just want to take care of their families and, you know, going to their place of worship just to connect with the higher power for, you know, as we all need to. And nobody expects to be harmed in a place of worship. And so when that happened in the Muslim community, there was a lot of fear and concern to even go to the mosque because of possible copycats. And, you know, I'm a father of four and to bring my kids to the mosque, that was like, you know, everyone was thinking twice or three times or four times that, you know, maybe it's not a good idea. I will say to the credit of all the cities, at least in the lower mainland that were connected to the RCMP in Surrey, the patrols, the concern of the City Council to kind of ensure that, hey, you know, the local government, the local law enforcement is there to help you. And then even as shocking or probably horrific because it was on video was the New Zealand attacks on mosques. And again, the common thread were individuals radicalised online and radicalism and extremists on every front, every religion or race. It seems like that seems to be where people get their extremist views and then they do these horrific things. And obviously with a service like Crime Stoppers dealing with hate and dealing with this type of hate that's prompting or encouraging violence in terms of Crime Stoppers, because there's so much levels of crime, but this type of crime, what would be percentages or the type of reports that are more kind of this nature of reporting be?
We get a fair number of tips on this type of activity, not specifically at the Muslims, but at many, many other groups as well. And I just really, really hope that we can get more tips. Not more violence for sure. We need to be working together. As I said earlier, we are one. We all, you know, are one big family and we need to be thinking about it that way. And it's just so tragic that a few individuals get so radicalised and they do these horrific crimes. And we need to get our handle on it. We need to stop it. It's just absolutely wrong. And, you know, I think over, you know, many centuries, there's always been this racial hatred. I can't think of a better word. And it is just wrong. You know, we need to be working together and we need to understand each other. And I think it's one of the beauties about living in the city of Surrey. Once you all get to know each other, you all then become one big family and you have a respect for everybody. And we need to do more of that. We need to be interacting more as a family. And it's just horrific. And when I hear stories about the mosques and, you know, you know, the synagogues and many other places of worship, it's not right. It's not right anywhere. And in particular, in a place of worship.
Yeah. And even churches, sadly, in the United States, there's been, again, attacks on various churches and congregants that are, again, there to do their worship and peace, love and harmony that is everyone wants. And nobody expects that to happen in their place of worship. And also, we would like to, as community members in the city of Surrey, because we are connected to all the Muslim organisations here, to invite Crime Stoppers after the pandemic to come. And as you said, you do presentations for various communities. And usually in the Muslim community, our Day of Worship or our Sabbath is Friday. And so Friday at 12:30 with this current time change. And then with the time change in April, it would be March or April, it'll be 1:30. And that's the mandatory prayer where Muslims have to do their weekly prayer in congregation. And what we did is actually after the Quebec shootings, the RCMP from E Division, they basically came to our working with the community to speak to the congregation after the prayers, just to say that, hey, you know, we're the local law enforcement. And to their credit, the law enforcement agencies also brought Muslim police officers to kind of speak the language and say, hey, we're also police too. And, you know, we may have cultural issues to report, but there's a reason to report. And again, the similar fashion, and this was direct to police, so report. fashion, and, and this was direct to police, so report direct to police. And, and I would say maybe a lot of people might be more interested. Let's report to Crime Stoppers and they can report it to the police. So that could be something possibly after the pandemic, we could, uh, we could do. And uh as you know, the Al-Jamiya Masjid on seventy-two is, is the highest kind of populated in terms of congregants. Uh several hundred uh or possibly even over a thousand people come there on a weekly basis. And so we'd be happy to extend that invitation after the pandemic for you to come and with the Crime Stoppers team to, to to uh to speak about the need to report these things.
I would really be honored to do that. Uh so whenever you would like me, I, I would love to come and, and do that. It would be my honor.
Fantastic. And, and now Linda, just kind of with um uh the, the discussion that we had about your career and in, in, in the city, the career with um with Crime Stoppers. And obviously you sit on many committees. So um I see there's the SAFE program. Maybe you could talk about the SAFE program and maybe explain that a bit.
Oh, I am very passionate about the SAFE program and uh it is um the most incredible program. Uh the federal government uh just over two years ago gave the city um uh a significant amount of funding for over five years. And I'm going to continue advocating to get this to extend uh forever if I can. And what it is, it's a program directed at families or kids that may be heading on the wrong path. And you, and generally the kids are identified if they've had some sort of an interaction, either they're truant at school, they're having troubles fitting in, uh they don't have a lot of friends. Maybe they've had an interaction with law enforcement, something like shoplifting or whatever it might be. Their name is referred to, the SAFE group, providing the family, of course, agrees. And they do what I call a wraparound program around the family and child. And they look at what, what's missing that is making this child go in this direction. What do we need to do before he or she goes too far down the path and gets into gang activity? Or gets involved in criminal activity. And it might be something as simple as the child doesn't feel like they're fitting in. So they may get them involved in certain sports activity. Or it may be that they are, you know, having some learning difficulties. And so they're embarrassed and they don't wanna go to school. So we'll get the specific activity for them. Maybe the families need some counseling in terms of um, you know, how to, you know, have a little bit more, a little better, better parenting skills or whatever it might be. And there's, there's ten organizations that run twelve programs to the SAFE hub. And since its inception, we've had just over fifteen hundred successful outcomes for kids and families living in Surrey. It's a program that I just think is so phenomenal. And I just, my, my only wish is that more people knew about it. And we need to get the word out there. And we need to get more funding as well, so we can continue the program on in, indefinitely, because it is such a worthwhile program. And in my role as, as Crime Stoppers, and I'm talking to other, you know, city councillors or other law enforcement agencies, they're all in envy of the program that we have here. It's just so phenomenal. What a great opportunity. We hear so many um stories, not just in Surrey, but throughout the lower mainland about kids getting involved in gang lifestyle. And we know if kids get involved, really, there's gonna be two outcomes. There's no way out. So you're either going to get put in jail because you've done something wrong, probably horribly wrong, or you're gonna get killed yourself. None of those are good outcomes. And police can't arrest themselves out of gang act, getting rid of gang activity. The solution to getting rid of gangs is to do early intervention with kids as young as ten or eleven. That's when they start to go down this path to get into gang activity. So as you can see, it's something I'm pretty passionate about. It's just a wonderful program.
Well, you actually brought up a, a very important topic. And we all know um newcomers uh coming to Canada, adjusting, just like uh your parents coming from Russia and other folks, maybe they're coming from Syria, possibly from Afghanistan, probably from India, from Pakistan, from different parts of the world and to adjust. And a lot of times, uh the mother and father are working and they're working long hours. And as a result, the kids are at home and certain peer groups and uh things happen. And, and kids you know, just wanna belong. They, they, they want a sense of identity, you know, a, a bit of money, a bit of recognition, some sort of significance. And uh, and then the gang kind of lifestyle can, can appeal to folks. It could be maybe even, even very good homes, but for whatever reason, the kids are finding that social connection or, or significance in, in this gang activity. And with the SAFE program, and this is what we heard actually with law enforcement in, in our outreach, is a lot of kids are getting into crime at these ages, eleven, ten years old, nine years old, twelve years old, selling drugs or, or these kind of things. So so the type of service that the SAFE program, it seems like it's very holistic and comprehensive with, with the family, with the person, trying to, to help that person uh not go down this path that's gonna, gonna take them possibly to, to jail or death.
It's, it's such a great program. And, you know, it's so unfortunate, but gang members prey on the young kids. And they get them in, starting to just, you know, deal in small amounts of drugs. And then it evolves and it evolves. And there's no way out. And it can happen so quickly and so easily that we need to be able to do a good intervention piece. And you're right, you know, when I think back and hear stories of my grandparents coming here, didn't speak English, they don't know how to navigate a lot of the programs that may or maybe available to them. They don't, I mean, things as simple as going grocery shopping, it can be a huge undertaking if you don't have a connection. And, you know, just getting assimilated and going and getting things like your social insurance number and that, all that piece. It's, it's like overwhelming. And then to be trying to, you know, make sure your kids stay on the right path as well. And which is first and foremost for every parent. And I just can't imagine it would just be overwhelming. So programs like SAFE and a lot of, you know, just being able to provide direction in terms of being able to where to go to get help is just immense, I think.
And I think possibly as we talk about the, the presentations at, at, at our various centers and Islamic centers in Surrey uh to discuss the SAFE program, because uh Crime Stoppers is one service. But again, uh, you know, every community, it doesn't matter, Muslim community, Sikh community, uh Christian community, Jewish community, everyone's worried about their kids. And, and sadly, we, we know uh people, uh young, young kids in our community have, have gotten into this, this, this uh path, this wrong path. And, and to, for the parents to know, what are the resources? Where can I get help? Uh that, 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 that's not gonna maybe get my kid in more trouble, but that can help them uh without them getting, uh so there's so many concerns around trying to help their kid without getting them further in trouble.
Well, and you don't know, right? You don't know how to navigate the system. You don't wanna call the police because you're gonna think, oh my God, now they're gonna come and arrest my, my child. But you wanna get help and you wanna get them on the right path. And that's where the SAFE program comes into play so well. But it's getting the word out and getting families engaged with it. And it's just overwhelming, I think, you know, parents, you know, we we wanna do the best job we possibly can. We want our kids to succeed. And there's always bumps along the road. And we just have to, as, as a city, make sure that those bumps are flattened out so that you know, parents and kids have healthy lives.
And how can people uh connect to the SAFE program? Um, wh- what is the best way to connect to the SAFE program? If, if, if people are worried about their kids and they wanna connect with, with your organization?
You can go on to this uh Surrey website and I can certainly send you, I don't, don't, don't have it handy, but um the link to it. And there's also a phone number as well that you can call into. And we will triage the call there as well.
A- absolutely. And, and what we'll do is we'll, we're gonna create a, a poster for this uh interview with all these resources that we're gonna circulate when we promote uh our interviews. So, so all those resources will be referenced. And, and when the pandemic uh and people are able to go back to places of worship, uh, do you have any like promotional brochures or posters that can be put on the local bulletin boards?
Absolutely. And we can, we can get them to you in English or whichever languages you would like.
Fantastic. And, and, and in, in terms of like um the uh, the, the long term, because Surrey is growing so fast. And, and obviously with great growth is great challenges and, you know, certain things kind of happen. And, and just for the future of five years, ten years, fifteen years, twenty years, in, in all these services to the community to really uh engage uh every community to their nuanced needs with the city of Surrey, what are the plans? Like, obviously, there are so many different ethnic and racial and religious groups in Surrey. What, what, what are the ways that the, the city, the city is planning to reach out to all these communities?
Well, we've done some, uh in, from a um connection perspective, we have had some wonderful festivals that we've done uh from a cultural perspective. Uh and we need to do more of that. I would love to see more um focus on that, you know, hearing more about other um nationalities and ethnicities that are moving to Surrey and having celebrations around them uh and welcoming them uh so that we can learn from each other. I think that's first and foremost. And on this, the social services piece, you know, we do need to work together with a lot of the agencies and so on that are serving new immigrants to make sure that the people that they're serving fully understand what's available in Surrey.
Absolutely. And, and with the festivals like Diwali and the i- i- in the Muslim community, we have our, our two Eids, which uh after Ramadan, Ramadan is actually coming up uh uh very soon, the next couple of months. And we have our, at the end of Ramadan, the Eid the prayer, where again, literally tens of thousands of people in Surrey specifically has probably the largest congregations. Like some, some of the places I've been to, five thousand people uh will come for that uh prayer. And, and the city's always been very, very gracious in in the permits and, and getting, getting the, 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 the service to our community. And so I wanted to, to really thank you for, for taking your time. I think we covered a lot of ground and a lot of your great work. I, I'm just looking at my list. There's many other things. Actually, you know, one important thing is indigenous community and, and First Nations. And, you know, we are again, uh uh have come after them and, and they've been here for, for long before we've been here. And please talk about your work with indigenous and First Nations peoples.
I, I actually work with um indigenous folks on, on two fronts. One is, uh I sit on the Metro Vancouver Board on the Indigenous Relations Committee. And I also um have a program through Crime Stoppers. And I'll start, start first with the program um with Crime Stoppers. It's a program that is, is culturally sensitive to what their needs are. So if you call, if somebody um that wants to call that is indigenous and, you know, is some, wants to report something. Our premise is around healthy living. So if you were to call in, because, not because somebody has necessarily committed a crime, or you think that they're doing something wrong, but maybe they're just struggling. Maybe they're struggling with alcohol, maybe they're struggling with drugs. Maybe their children aren't going to school. You can call Crime Stoppers and we will refer it to the appropriate person. Uh generally uh within the uh First Nations uh group. So if um you were calling in, say, about something that's happened uh with twas in First Nations, we would refer it to maybe their family services worker. Or we may refer it to an elder or whoever. We determine what, what, who we need to work with. So it's not, it's about prevention. Not necessarily about arrest or even taking something to court. It's just ensuring that somebody gets the right help.
And, and with, with this uh board, like the Crime Stoppers is one service, uh but in terms of providing that holistic support for people that are going through some mental health issues, addiction issues. And, and i- it is kind of uh that holistic human support. And, and how would, how would uh what would be the best way to get that support? Or what are the, the ways to connect uh for people that need that help?
Well, if people are needing that help, um call Crime Stoppers certainly is one, one great way. Uh if you're wanting to find out what resources are available, I would call, if, if people are comfortable to do this, the non-emergency number for the police and they can direct you to the resources that are available. Um, oftentimes, other organizations like United Way or organizations like that, depending on what type of help you're needing, can direct you. We're very blessed in, in Surrey. We have a lot of help here for people, for an example, that have um uh drug or, drug or alcohol abuse uh issues. We have Phoenix House just a minute, Chin One. Um, and when in doubt, another really good resource is to call your health authority.
And I will say with the great work that uh you've done and Crime Stoppers has done, the, the level of uh sponsorships that you've had with the, the large banks and the, the large companies that, that obviously they wanna be part of the solution. And, and and did these companies reach out to, to uh yourself and, and Crime Stoppers to say, hey, we wanna support the great work you're doing?
We get a lot of support from the community. Uh we're not uh funded by the federal government or the provincial government. Uh we really rely on the community that we serve to either make donations to Crime Stoppers. The cities and municipalities in which we are located in do provide with some funding. But that's just enough funding to kind of keep the lights and the doors open. The additional funding that we get from people or from uh organizations or corporations allows us to do that much more.
And, and i- and I think you hit the nail on the head, because society's issues require government. It requires uh uh that trust between the public and obviously that intermediary relationship with law enforcement, keeping the confidentiality, and then also stakeholders, which, which are again, all these uh uh larger corporations and, and institutions to, to really come together, because it really is a united effort to resolve society's problems. And I, I want to thank you and the great work that you're doing, the City Council of, of Surrey and, and the mayor. And, and the great uh team you have at Crime Stoppers for, for all the great work you're doing. So thank you for joining us. And we will be uh publishing this in the coming uh a couple of weeks. And we'll send you all the materials. And that's the end of our interview. Thank you very much, Linda.
Thank you very much. This was really enjoyable and it's been a real honor to chatting with you.